Tracy.
And it shows that we're live now. We still have one more minute there.
Okay.
Okay.
You ready?
Yes.
Okay, like to call this committee is I committed the whole meeting to order. First of all, we've all had our agendas to have someone move to accept the agenda. Move seconded by Council Black. Thank you. Any discussion? Good. All those in favor signify by saying up, raising your hand, I guess, just so we can see them. Thank you very much. First on the agenda is the approval of the previous minutes of a motion up to that place. Moved by Council Jones. Seconded by Council McDonald. All those in favor signify by raising their hand, please. When it's approved, motion carried. I guess we're zooming right along here. First up is a presentation from Tracy Black. So I will turn the floor over to you. Tracy, you're on mute right now.
Actually, I believe I'm actually. Sorry, Tracy.
No, go ahead. Heather is going to do the presentation and we want to share a screen if that's okay.
Okay.
The capability should be there. Just let me know.
Yeah, it is here. I'm just gonna pull it up right now. It's been a while since I've done this. There we go. Can you guys all see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, everybody's good.
Yes.
And so we just want wanted to talk on behalf of the Cumberland County. And we just wanted to talk about a proposal for use of the arena out of the skating season. So we are hoping to install the arena footing. So I'm just, there we go. Install the arena footing as soon as the ice is removed from the rink. We could rent it out for events in the spring, summer, and fall. Obviously, we discussed sharing proceeds with you guys and whatever capacity that looks like. It's definitely an option for multitude of events, some of the pitch shows, horse pulls. We've had a whole range of events go on in that arena during the month of August, but we'd love to extend that season through the spring and fall as well. There's quite a few advantages. So the grounds themselves are fantastic. It gives us a full-size arena suitable for a wide range of events. It's also near the Trans-Canada and New Brunswick border, which makes it highly accessible to a multitude of people. There's a large stands for spectators, adequate parking. It also would benefit Oxford's economic growth. It also attracts new visitors to the area. I know that Oxford has some up-and-coming businesses and cafes and whatnot. That would be excellent to attract some new people. And the community events and entertainment, so it gives more opportunities for the community to have different events and different entertainment at their disposal. I'm gonna let Kirstine talk a little bit about this. If she doesn't mind popping in, I'm kind of putting her on the spot.
Sure.
So the American Quarter Horse, like a mock of an event economic impact. So this would just be the, go ahead Kirstine, sorry, you go ahead.
Can you hear me? Make sure I'm on.
Yep, I can hear you.
Oh, perfect. Basically, this was, I found this online, the HQHA is the American Quarter Horse Association. They have calculated the economic impact of an event. That show a clinic, people just renting it together. If you, I mean, it's a bit small, I guess, but you can see that $150 per person being spent in the community per day. Because that would include places to stay, food that people would buy, things that they might go and buy in the town. So we need that when I go to horse events, I know I spend a great deal of money in the community. And I see other people doing the same. Opening this up, I mean Sussex, New Brunswick has a fantastic facility. And they bring in a lot of money to that community, people coming, renting a place to stay, eating, spending money. It just brings in a lot of people. And horse people like to spend money. It's their hobby. So the formula is there. I didn't do the calculations, but that's the American Quarter Horse Association. Change that to Canadian dollars, I guess. That's all I have to say.
Great, thank you Kirstine. Yeah, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. And that's just for a horse event. Obviously cattle events and things would be a little different, but when you think about it, one horse doesn't always equal one person. Usually there's, especially if it's a youth, there's usually parents with them or grooms, et cetera. So that's why it says actual number of horses times three people and so on. This is just a picture. Hans County was fortunate enough, they put in their footing also summer most years, but this year they were giving it. I believe there's no more ice going in it. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong from my board. But there's actually no ice going in it, so they have a faulty around. But it's, it's just to show that there's lots of other arenas in the area. Most of the other exhibitions are able to put their footing in for the majority of the season, spring, summer, and fall, and are able to work with their town to do so. So we're just hoping that we can come to some agreement to also be able to rent it. Obviously, at this point, we're a little late in the season, but, but definitely looking forward to 2022 and hopefully being able to work with you guys. So that's kind of where we're at with that. Is there any questions?
Council Jones.
Is this type of event happening now in Nova Scotia, or is this something that's gonna be new?
Nope, there's events like this all over Nova Scotia. So we already host a couple of these types of events in August. This August, we're hosting a horse show as well as a cattle show pending COVID, obviously. But other, there's other areas in the province, like chosen regularly. Muscat, but chosen events regularly. So this year they're trying to do a series of cattle shows at a couple of different exhibitions because traditional exhibitions aren't happening. But on a normal year, even without COVID and with regular exhibitions, there's regular events going on all the time at many different, different facilities throughout the province. So we would just be one more. That's a little more central and a little more local for a lot of people.
So, so when this event would take place, would the curling club be used as well, or is that still going to be a vacant building in the summertime?
It potentially could still be a vacant building. It would 100% depend on what the event was, but if we're thinking just a cattle show or just a horse show, that building would still be vacant. So anything that would typically go on in the arena. So for example, right now, I believe, or they were, maybe they're not now that it's dry, but they were, I believe, doing baseball in the arena. They theoretically could do that in the industrial building. It's a huge open space and it has, you know, a way a range of facilities as well for, you know, baseball practice, dryland training, whatever that would normally go on in the arena if there was dirt in the arena.
Thank you.
Council Colburn, then Council Ed, please.
This Quarter Horse Show, would this be a yearly event? I know years, quite a few years ago, we had a chance to have a Quarter Horse Show here and it was going to be a yearly event and there was quite a bit of money involved in with that. Would we be part of this?
We don't specifically have any events booked. Yeah, you can go ahead Kirstine.
We weren't talking about in particular. A lot of horse people are looking for places to hold events. For example, the chair of the Nova Scotia
Kind of broke up there. We didn't really get an answer. From what I understand, there's no event planned right now.
Right, so we didn't have a specific event planned. I know she's cutting in and out there and I apologize. So we were just looking for an opportunity to have it for the spring, summer, and fall to hopefully promote some of these events like a Quarter Horse Show, et cetera, et cetera. We have a great grounds and facility to be able to host an event like that. But we have not booked anything because obviously we didn't, this is all pending. So nothing is booked, nothing is written in stone. The hope is just to have the potential to have the facility for a lot longer, to hopefully hope host more things like clinic shows and events. So it's, yeah, nothing is written. You were cutting in and out.
Council Ed, Deputy Mayor Ed, your question?
Yes, I was just wondering if you guys have calculated any kind of revenue that, you know, an estimate on what you think that the town would get back for rental on the facility and how you would, I guess, at the end of the season, how you would go about getting it cleaned and cleaned up again for the ice season and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so in terms of the that we haven't made any concrete just in having a sit-down meeting with you guys or a Zoom meeting pending COVID. And we can discuss, you know, something that's fair for both of us that we can work out by all. Right now, we have someone that goes in every year at the end of our exhibition when the dirt's been in anyway and cleans it up. So there's always a layer of plastic put down under the dirt. So we have the dirt removed and then we remove all the plastic and then we have it pressure washed. So that's been the same that we have to have it cleaned up and, and for the longer this year.
So, yeah, you're talking about cleaning the floor and stuff like, what about the rest of the facility? Because I know for years, the the beams get dusty and, and the stands get dusty. And do you guys have a plan put in place to, you know, clean? Because right now, the facility is really, it's pretty clean. It's clean. It's been for probably years. And it's mainly because I think there's been a lot of effort put into volunteers and stuff to get it cleaned up and everything over the last winter. But I was just wondering if, you know, that, that would be my biggest concern is that the, the facility's left dirty and dusty and I know, you know, there's gonna be animals and stuff in there.
Yeah, absolutely. We would, we would have somebody clean it and make sure that the stands and the beams and everything were clean as well if that was a concern. I know in the past that we have tried to have somebody clean it and perhaps it wasn't cleaned up to standard, but we would certainly look at that and address that and maybe hire somebody different if it wasn't being done to standard, for sure.
Any other questions for Heather or the committee? Well, we have got Council McNot, she would be the one you would probably most, have the most contact with in regards to this. We've sort of given her charge of the arena. So we will take this under advisement for now and have some negotiations, Council, Deputy Mayor Ed.
Just wondering also, like you were talking about long-term and everything like that, do you have events that you were looking at for this year? Or is this something that we can, you know, take and take some time to think about and try to get some better proposal? It would be really nice to sit, talk to you guys in person and sit over this Zoom because this was, wasn't very good. We couldn't hear everybody half the time and everything. So I was just wondering, you know, what your timeframe are you?
Yeah, absolutely. For this year, we're planning on just doing the same as every year, just obtaining it for the month of August, which is, so we're really looking for 2022. We would like to be able to have it for spring, summer, fall, if possible, if we can come to that agreement. And absolutely, yeah, like if we wanna talk about this, hopefully in the fall, it will be a little safer and we can potentially have a, have a meeting, but we'd really like to know by January 1, if at all possible. Because if we can start advertising, you know, throughout the winter, that's when a lot of events are being booked. So we'd really like to know as early as possible so we can have those, you know, have that opportunity to have them booked. But yeah, it's not, not for this season. At this point, we're getting a little late in the season, so we'll just have it for our regular month of August. And we do have some events planned for August, but in terms of having it for three seasons, we're looking at 2022.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Or comments? Well, okay, well, thank you very much. It's food for thought for us. It'll give us something to talk about over the summer as well. So I want to thank you for giving the time, opening the schedules to drop in and sort of give us some, some ideas. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for including us. We really appreciate it. And if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. But I know you have Tracy's contact, so by all means, don't, don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good night.
Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Next on our agenda, I don't think Tamara is with us, but Jonathan, you're here. You're gonna give a presentation. I'll turn the floor over to Jonathan. And away we go.
Okay, thank you for inviting me to, to do this presentation on our Cumberland Regional Joint Community Economic Development Strategy. So I will share my screen if that's okay. And some of you who are at Joint Council Session at the end of March would have had a preview, had, have seen this already. And now I just want to go through it again and answer any of your questions. So this Joint Regional Community Economic Development Strategy has been worked on over the last 18 months or so. And most of the work that's been done on it, it's been done by Tamara Porter from the town of Amherst, Michelle Byers from the municipality of Cumberland, myself, from the Cumberland Business Connector. And Rachel had input in it too, when it was being reviewed at the CAO level a few months back. So when we look at the Economic Development Strategy, there is really four pillars that we're looking at. The economy, population, quality of life, and community capacity. So sometimes people say economic development, community economic development, business development. Is it all the same? What are we talking about? If you look at economic development or business development, you can see that on the left-hand side of your screen. It really is focused on retaining the businesses that we have, seeing them expand, attract new businesses, or encourage new business startups. So that is economic development or business development. Community economic development includes that, but it also includes quality of life, community infrastructure, and community well-being. Now, in 2014, the town of Amherst and municipality of Cumberland developed a joint strategy with four pillars of business support, tourism, demographics, and community capacity. When we looked at updating it, we looked at the strengths and weaknesses of our region. Some of our strengths are the healthcare and educational facilities that we have, the retail and cultural sectors, a large diverse agricultural industry, and we could add to that forestry, fishing, mining. We have a strong manufacturing presence for a rural area and small-town area, and there's high entrepreneurial spirit. Challenges that we have faced is a declining population. And out of those that are for the working age population, there is a lower labor force participation. That means people who are either employed or looking for work. So compared to the national average, we're below that. And from a wellness point of view, high poverty rates impact people's mental health and physical health and have a large impact on the quality of life. Our aging population means that we're in a position right now where we have more than twice as many people between 60 and 64 as between 20 and 24. So there's a lot more retirements from the workforce than people entering it. So these are some of the things that, as a background, are challenging for our business community and our region. So when we looked at our new strategy, we have, again, four pillars, a little different wording. We have the economy, we have population, quality of life, and community capacity. So when we look at it, this region has had strengths and challenges. The mining industry, obviously the coal mining industry in the southern part of the county, when that declined and went away, there's communities that have been very severely impacted that have, that impact has continued multi-generational. A lot of people have left areas like Spring Hill and Jogans. Again, we're seeing a change today, but that has been a long-term trend. In our strategy, we looked at the current business climate and what the key sectors were in the economy. And one of the things that is a very strong positive for this region is a collaborative spirit. There is a very strong working collaboration at the municipal level, at the staff level, at, in, among the economic development players, and that allows us to accomplish much more than everyone trying to do it on their own. Couple of the specific challenges that we're dealing with in the last 18 months is the forestry sector and the crisis that has hit that industry. And obviously COVID, which has turned the world upside down. So the goals and objectives in this sector, we want to increase business retention and expansion. We want to increase business attraction in new businesses and create a job-ready workforce. And generally speaking, what has been found in the business development world is it's a lot easier to keep a business you have than to attract a new business to replace it. So the business retention is a key thing for us to focus on, to keep and grow our existing business, and then have new startups or new businesses move to the area. Creating a job-ready workforce is key because we can have all the jobs, but if there's no one to fill them, or there's no one with the correct skills to fill them, then that is going to be a barrier to our long-term success. If you look at our population, we've, over 15 years or so, we lost eight or nine percent of the population from the region. Again, not all areas shared in that equally. But when you have people moving away, there's less people to support the gas station, the convenience store, the other businesses on Main Street, it becomes harder and harder to sustain our economy. We only have about 200 immigrants in the region who came here between 20, in 2006 and 2016. That's about a third of the same rate that the rest of the province saw. So people moved away, people passed away, less people moved here. And this has, is one of our biggest challenges over the last 20 years. So the goals and objectives for the population section are quite clear. We want to increase the population of the region and have a significant focus on working-age families. If we can bring in people in their 30s and 40s who have skills that can come in and fill some of our labor gaps, their children are coming into our school system, that's the next generation of workforce. If their parents come along with them as well, that's great. But we need to work on building that workforce capability and supply. We also want to attract 200 new immigrants by the year 2026, which again is double what we saw over, or the same as we've seen over a 10-year period, do the same in five years. The Nova Scotia Quality of Life Index, you maybe have heard of this. I'm sure most of you likely have. In 2019, there was a very extensive survey done all across Nova Scotia of things that affect people's quality of life, whether it's their commuting time, their work-life balance, access to recreational facilities, jobs, stability. And we have a very good baseline data. And that happened in 2019, which was before these two crises that we've seen here, COVID and the forestry crisis. So that gives us a very good baseline that down the road we can compare to, to see how well we've navigated these crises. And have we increased people's quality of life? So when we look at quality of life, it used to be people looked, say, people who graduate from university or college or high school, they look for the job they wanted and then they move to it. What a lot of people today are doing is they're looking for the community they want to live in. Once they've identified the community or the region they want to live in, then they look for a job. So the quality of life is a key thing to attract and keep families and individuals coming into our region. Along included in quality of life is access to technology. And as we're demonstrating tonight, the internet divide is a critical issue. There is, it's as, as important moving forward as electricity was, or public sewer and water isn't in municipality. So adequate access to, to technology impacts people's quality of life. So we want to increase the overall health and living standards of people, develop the community infrastructure, and increase that access to technology. So as part of the community capacity building in this strategy, we have looked and said, okay, here is the high-level region-wide strategy for the, the region. But individual communities have their own unique attributes and opportunities. So when Spring Hill and Parisboro dissolved, there was funding set aside by the province for the municipality of Cumberland to, to do strategic plans, a strategic economic development plan for those communities. Those have been completed. It was felt that the other urban pockets across the region would benefit from that as well. And I believe Amherst is looking at, at reviewing their municipal planning strategy this year, and other communities may follow in future years. When we presented this to the Joint Council at the end of March, there was some feedback came back. So I've added in this slide. So one of the things that was pointed out, what the questions that was asked was how does this relate to what we're doing or how do we report on it? So this five-year regional economic development strategy allows each municipality, as well as the Cumberland Business Connector, to develop our work plan, our annual work plan. So there may be specific priorities highlighted in this regional strategy that we say, we can't do that for another two or three years. But this year, we're going to work on item one and item four. And obviously, that allows the municipalities and the connector to adapt as things change. We had to change last year with COVID, everything. So it gives us flexibility, but it keeps us working towards the same, same goals. We added in a note about having a joint midterm review that happens by year three to track progress against the priorities identified here. And each, each priority that was put in place has an implementation table that identifies who's going to lead it. And it aligns with the organization's area of focus. So for example, if we look at this implementation chart on population, everyone is involved in maintaining that, a positive net interprovincial migration, having people move here from the rest of Canada. So when it comes to creating a place where municipal, where people want to live, that's something that is ideally suited for municipalities. This is signage for walking trails, green space. Is there a cafe opened? Those type of things create the sense of place where people want to be. We're working on initiative right now with the, the Business Connector to attract workers. Again, Amherst is doing something on a similar base, so they're also leading in that initiative. The other municipalities are in a supporting role. So there's different things where we collect, one person does it, one organization does it. Maybe all organizations are two or three, but this just gives us an accountability checklist to see who said they were going to do it and how's it going. So when we look at our key takeaways, out of these four pillars, you know, if everyone may have an idea of which is the most important one, but I think one of the key priorities that we need to focus on as a region is the increased population growth. On the weekend, Don Mills, who used to head Corporate Research Associates, had an article in the Chronicle Herald. And he pointed out that three communities that have saw very good economic growth is Halifax, Charlottetown, and Moncton. And he says, it's not a coincidence that growth has corresponded with an increase in population. And he says, the development organizations there have population growth strategy as part of their overall development plan. So if we bring in more people, it stabilizes municipal tax base. It creates employment for teachers, for building contractors. It creates more customers for restaurants, for retail stores, and it creates that virtuous cycle that will strengthen our region. Job-ready workforce is one of our top priorities at the Business Connector. We need to make sure that we have enough people with the right skill set to meet our business needs. We don't want our businesses closing down here and relocating because it can't access the workforce. So there's a lot of, a lot of areas that we could work on, but I think I'll stop talking now in case there's any questions. Work on, but I think I'll stop talking now in case there's any questions.
Go ahead, Linda.
Okay, yes, Jonathan, so tonight, we had a received a memo from Michelle Byers. Regarding to request counsel to adopt the Cumberland Region Community Economic Development Strategy. Right? So with that, a question came out of our last council is what is the cost for Oxford?
There is no cost. This strategy was completed internally with staff time. It was just plugged the way added a bit at a time since Amherst and Cumberland had initiated the first one, they. Put a lot of the time into update it and as a business connector, we were doing the same. But we did circulate it out to Rachel to get her input so that we weren't. You know, we felt that this is much stronger as a whole region, but there is no cost to this. It is just trying to make sure that one person isn't turning left and another person turning right and working at cross purposes.
So what you need from council is a motion to adopt the Cumberland Regional Community Economic Development Strategy as is presented. Correct? We could do that at a council meeting. Okay, I just wanted to be sure that's what you needed.
Council McNutt, you have question?
Sure, I'm guessing that these are all pre-COVID numbers, correct?
What numbers?
Like population, as of right now, that is not a problem. Housing shortage is much bigger a problem right now than population.
Yes, we feel there has definitely been an in-migration. To the to this region and we think, you know, the speed at which it changed is difficult to adjust. Adjust to and handle, but the fact is we are gaining a very. And let's hope it's sustaining and long-lasting that people stay here and can start businesses here or like I hired a lady, her parents grew up in the Spring Hill area. She grew up in the West Coast, her husband and her and her son moved back last summer. The skill set that I've been able to get with that hire is very, very top top quality. So population growth is something I think we want to continue to work on. But we but we have identified, and I think every municipality has identified that growing the housing supply. Critical. It it's critical because, you know, we've had situations that. Senior managers are hired at businesses and they're struggling to find housing.
Yeah, unfortunately, personally, and the people that I know in our town. We're getting an influx of people from everywhere across Canada. They're selling their homes in, say, Victoria for five hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars, whatever. And then they're taking all of the housing from our people here. So I know a few twenty-year-olds who can just not afford to buy a house in this town. Because we have so many people coming from outside, which is excellent, except that people who've lived here their whole lives can't afford to buy a house here.
And and I think with that, like if you look at, we have some stats on our website, home construction. That probably, I think it's I'm going from memory, before nineteen sixty, over six thousand of our homes were built in that in that era. Then from nineteen sixty to nineteen eighty, it was maybe three thousand from eighty to two thousand, it's half of that. But from two thousand to two thousand and sixteen, there was only four hundred homes built in the entire region. Because when everyone's moving away, you can buy a house maybe at half the replacement cost. Which is is great if you're in the in the buyer's market, but then you're not getting that new construction. And so now that's caught up with us and is really biting us. So, you know, that is, you know, it is a big challenge.
Yeah, and unfortunately, building new houses right now, it'll be zero.
Not cheap.
Yeah, it went from four hundred to zero, basically.
Any other questions for Jonathan from the council? Okay, so Linda will prepare a motion for our next council meeting and we'll deal with that then. I want to thank you for coming in tonight, Jonathan, taking time away from your schedule. Have a nice day out. I want to get out and enjoy it.
Well, thank you for having me.
Okay, have a good night.
Okay, you too.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Okay, new business, draft general operating budget, Ruth Ann and Ken will turn the floor over to you.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Did everybody get their email this afternoon with the. The new numbers worked out when. With the draft budget, I'm just hoping everybody received that email.
Is that the one that says general operations budget draft at the top?
Was an email, I think there's been a few with that name, so I don't want to say that's the one, but. Just this afternoon, I sent the email like later, like three o'clock, so. I'm gonna share my screen there, Linda, and find the right one. Okay. There, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, this is what I sent everyone this afternoon. I know a few you received one on Friday, but this is a more updated version. Committees have met since Friday and develops new numbers in here. So when we, the audit committee met on Monday evening, last evening. Basically, what they saw was just in this column, the draft budget. And that had everybody's wishes and wants and what we what everybody thought they they needed and wanted in this year's budget. The problem being at the very bottom, as you will see, there was a ninety-six thousand dollar deficit. So we had to pull some stuff out and to get a better. Budget for this year. So the audit committee on Monday evening looked at a few avenues, the things that they decided upon. Was to, if the community committee will run the rink again, that would be great, that would be a big savings on our part. Not to have to operate the rink as well, we're not not going to consider a recreation director for this year. There's community groups that are doing a lot of great stuff that is filling in for that spot for now. And and hopefully get back to the point where we can can afford a few of these things. We also. Reached out to the fire department and the public works department to scale down their budgets. By, well, a fair amount for, so they meant and they did a great job. You'll see down here in the fire, like all these numbers stayed the same, but once you get down to the fire. Section of the expenses, you'll notice in the highlighted area is where they reduced their budgets. Fire trucks and repairs, they came up with less repairs done through Scotia's fleet services this year, and they felt they could reduce that. And as well, they're looking at this, the breathing apparatuses and and trying to figure out a different way of of financing this. We were hoping maybe we could do it through COVID, but it seems to be a difficult sell. I have put an email out to the province to get clear direction on on if we could somehow. Use that money, but I have not received any response back on that yet. And it's. These, this is a transportation services, they did a lot of cutting in here from what the original budget said. And cut down a lot in different repair areas. The tractor Kuboto instead of spending a lot on repair, they're going to look into a lease. I do not have an official figure on the lease, I stuck eighty-five hundred in there a year. That was just an estimate between Wes and I, so but he didn't, I don't have a. An actual number in there for that yet. Salt truck repair was another area that was cut back. Some repair in the small tools and equipment that. And O P H hall, the roof repair, I thought. And the handrails and window repair, cut that down to twenty-five hundred, just going to repair the roof, not not replace it there at the O P H hall. Another area that they reduced is not turning the town garage in. By not taking away the wood and putting the boiler in, that was going to cost forty-five hundred. And then they also needed a door repair up there that was estimated twenty-five hundred, so they said they wouldn't. Wouldn't go ahead with that this year. The phone, it was just a ridiculous price to install it, but it was a hard install, so they're just not going to put internet up there right now. We'll look at other avenues. We have been talking to our IT person there in in Amherst, and she thinks. Another mode would work, something like data usage, trying to think of the word, it's not coming to me right now, but. More or less like a MiFi idea, you know, that that you still will have limited data, but they don't need a lot of data in it. It's would be quick, fast, and it wouldn't take a. A permanent install. So there was a few other items. We didn't have any sundray last year, so we decided to cut that out. That was just like odds and sods. Clothing, Wes said he had some in stock, so he could probably scale that back down a fair amount. He had included here a backhoe course for one of the employees, he was hoping to get somebody else trained in a backhoe there, so he took that out. Salt, he took that down five, I mean, it all depends on your winter this year, we did. We did need our full budget in salt, but it's a, you know, it's something that's a hard guess, just depends on the winter. So we did, he did cut that out down five. Now this one here, street maintenance, they cut it down, but this we have to talk about because. They were hoping that we could use the patching work and put it to the capital. And pay for it through the gas tax, but unfortunately, that's not the way gas tasks works. Gas tax really is for a capital project that is a capital item, not a repair. So. You know, that's, that was ninety-nine thousand five hundred that was taken out of there to. Scale back on, take out the patching altogether, but not so sure accounting-wise that 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 can happen that way. The sidewalks, you wanted to do two sidewalks and that is in the capital budget. So took those out completely, that was Duke and Hanlon. And so if we decide to do, take those out, then right now I have them in the capital budget for being done this year. So we'll have to decide when when you do want to have that done, so we can put that in whatever year it needs to be done. So they did a really good job, they wanted, the audit committee wanted them cut back to three forty-six or three fifty, they cut. Cut it back to three forty-three. So everybody did such a great job in cutting back the numbers. We now have a surplus of sixty-seven thousand dollars. Now, in here, you notice this is, we do have fifty thousand going into reserves from this budget. So this is above that fifty thousand, this sixty-seven thousand, so. Now, I might get Ken to speak a bit on this, but. I spoke to Ken this afternoon and really, these budgets are supposed to be balanced to zero. So we need to put the sixty-seven thousand someplace. And it's your guys' decision whether you want to bring some of this stuff back into the budget that got scaled out. Or, you know, what you actually want to do with the sixty-seven thousand dollars. And maybe Ken, I'll get you to jump in here and and explain this a little further, you with your experience, you probably could. Explain this a little better than me.
Okay, thanks, Ruth Ann. Yeah, with with the budget, it's a work in progress. And and what the staffman during your committees doing typical of other municipal units is is you're working. With a bottom-line figure trying to decide level of service and where you should cut, where you should add. The last thing you end up doing is is bringing it to zero. Because you can't, you can't have a budget surplus or a deficit in your budget for the year. Now, what happens is you have you have several choices when when you have have a net income, for example, you can go back and. Rethink some of your line items to pick up, or you can transfer it to to operating reserve or to capital reserve. So in the case of capital, you'd increase from fifty to one hundred and seventeen, or you could transfer to the operating reserve. So so those are, or you can decrease your tax rate. So and that's an example of adjusting a line item, which would be a revenue at line item. So those are your options. So you've taken this and went through a similar exercise with the town of Shelburne where they. They were work working their budget to to see, see what they should do. They ended up cutting really tight and ended up with a hundred thousand dollar net income, we'll call it. Then went back, added a few things back in, like a splash pad, which people, the community would really want. And the net difference, they ended up splitting between a transfer to operating reserve and a transfer to capital. So so where you have, you have one line item, transfer reserves. Sometimes councils will have transfer to operating reserve, transfer to capital reserve. So so that's, I guess, your next step, if you're. Besides your line items is to decide where are you going to, what you're going to do with the sixty-seven, because it has to be zero.
And Mayor Henley, a quick question. According to the regulations, could we not have like a contingency fund set aside to put that money in just in case? We get some sort of surprise, it's going to cost us sixty-seven thousand dollars. Is that for me?
Well, actually, we did this in Bridgewater a few times. We had a contingency line item. But it was for things that, giving you one example, there was a potential significant severance of a of a top staff. So it was hard to say what was going to happen, so they they put aside a certain amount of contingency. Another, and at the same year, it was also collective agreements were were. Were being undertaken and would be settled retroactive back. And so they had to set, they 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 set aside the contingency. So you might normally do that for for a significant items that have a contingent line. Or you could, you could use sundries through some of your accounts, like your your breathing apparatus, twenty-seven thousand. If if that stays, that, we're hoping that COVID, it'd be eligible for COVID, but if it it does fall through, you may want to set that up as a contingency.
So am I correct in assuming we are allowed to set up a contingency line and put money in there just? And and have it unspecified as to what it would be used for, or you have to specify?
We we we, my experience is we've we've done that in Bridgewater. And we didn't, we didn't break down the contingency exactly, because we didn't want to give away the figures for collective bargaining. But we did do that.
But it has to be for a specific purpose.
You could lump several several together, but I wouldn't. You you could lump several several together, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. Get a number of things in a contingency, otherwise it it um. Yeah, you 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 may typically, you might have sundry within a department, for example. For example, your transportation, you cut back a lot on repairs and so forth. It might be a little tight, you may want to put. A line item contingency or sundry or um, more contingency, I guess, would be better. Um, is a line item, but.
Ken, can I ask a question? What is the difference between um, operating reserves and a contingency?
A contingency is a. Line item. Like an expense that you're planning for, same as an allowance. So you you'll set up for allowance for tax write offs, for example. That's a line item that you set up as as an estimate. A transfer is a specific decision by council. To transfer from the operating budget for the year to an operating reserve or a capital reserve.
And is it easy to transfer it back once it's in the operating reserve?
Well, what happens is is council during the year can draw upon your. Operating reserve with a motion of council, so if if you had a major piece of equipment. Fall apart on you and needed significant repairs, council would explicitly. Pass a motion transferring out of res- operational reserve to cover that. But you you normally an operating reserve is 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 built up. For a significant. Event or to cover. You know, if you had two or three years of deficits, basically cover those de- deficits over the. Over the time, it's like setting aside money for a rainy day in case something happens.
And we want, sorry?
The capital is is money you set aside, so. You're planning for a project five years from now and you're building up your capital reserve. So you don't have to incur a lot of debt in that year or draw on your operating reserve to try to uh. Carry out that that project, and I know you've talked about um. Any opportunities that come along with provincial and federal uh capital funding. Uh, programs that you've got a reserve set set aside, so you can uh cost share, take advantage of those. Those opportunities by you have have the funds in place to uh, to uh, cost share.
And we want that fund to be somewhere in the four hundred thousand dollar vicinity.
That's what you're aiming for, that it's sort of considered best practice, combination of the capital. And operating reserves to be somewhere between thirty and forty percent, so with you it'd be. Somewhere between six fifty and and a million between the two, so. I I think I think you're you're heading the right direction with with your reserves. Uh, with with what you're trying to do. It's 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 a, what you don't want to do is not set aside anything in reserves for every year, just trying to keep keep the tax tax rate. Uh, steady and uh, at the expense of putting some money aside in reserves.
Um, I just wanted to say a little something in here too, to explain. It being too tight on the budget, and if we do end up overspending on some of the areas where we scaled back on. We, and say we took the sixty seven thousand and we put it all into the operating reserve, which I'm all about putting stuff into the reserve, but. If we have tightened our belts too much and we end up spending more, then we will be in a deficit. And that deficit will show as a deficit for us again for for another year, so. Kind of keep that in mind when you're deciding where to put the sixty seven thousand dollars. Just because although it would be nice to have it all in reserve where our reserves were low. Um, if we tightened things too much in our operating budget. And we end up spending more than what we have, we're, it will show as a deficit for this year.
And we can't just pull it from the reserves and it.
Not this year.
Wouldn't show as a deficit.
It would, the year after you can.
Right.
You have that extra money reserves, but it that year you're shown as a deficit. Even though in your mind, okay, I'll put all this money in reserves, but we really didn't have enough to operate on.
I just think if we're trying to get it for.
Go ahead, Ruth Ann.
I was just asking Ken if I explained that, uh, we we spoke about this this afternoon and and I was a little concerned that. Maybe we tightened some areas too much, uh, in that we don't want to. Overspend and be in a deficit again.
So if we put that sixty seven thousand, just throw it towards reserves. And at the end of the fiscal year, we found out we could only put in fifty thousand, we'd end up. We'd still committed to put the sixty seven in, but would show a sixty seven thousand dollar deficit, am I correct?
Or if you're com- yeah, you're committed to put the sixty seven thousand in, so then whatever you overspend in all those other lines is. It is a deficit.
Right, okay.
Yeah, is that correct, Ken?
Yeah, because what happens is, uh, when you do, the auditors do complete the financial statements and you you. Send your information to the province and and the public, you'd be showing uh, a deficit of, you know, fifty thousand or whatever. Um, and and that that deficit can be picked up different ways, but for the for the year. Twenty one, twenty two, you would be showing a deficit, uh, for the next year, that has to be picked up somehow. And it can may either be through your next year's budget, or there could be a transfer from operating reserve. To to uh, cover it, but um, you you uh. You want to be, you want to sort of balance your your um. Um, level of service, what you're aiming for. Um, and and I'm not saying set up all kinds of contingency, but have. I- i- it's risky to to cut too far in line items that aren't controllable. It, one thing, you can you can cut in areas which are controllable, but a line item set. You really don't have. Control over, particularly when you get into your your infrastructure. There's cer- certain, certain expenditures that you, you really can't, you have to depend on history, so. Um, to to see how much, and and I know you're looking at ways of of uh. Doing things a little better, saving things, but that takes a little bit of time and before you get the the uh. The output of that, for example, I know you're putting uh, your services up for tender. Um, and you may find some good payback there, but it doesn't happen overnight, so.
Wade had a question here.
I'm looking at the budget here, I see we're we're putting sixty two thousand in from our reserves for our arena automation project. I'm just wondering if it might not be better to take that sixty seven thousand dollars and move it into there and just leave our sixty two thousand dollars in our reserves.
Can I uh, jump in here?
I believe the, because we.
We we are committed to spend on Reno automation.
When you wanted to do that, I guess, that's.
To whoever.
There was supposed to be quite a savings with.
The automation or any of that, so, I'm not sure.
Can I uh, jump in here? Why, why don't we leave it as is and put a contingency in the fire budget and in the uh. Uh, public works, split that sixty seven thousand between the two. And then we don't have to show a deficit at the end of the year, if we come on, you know, expenses that. We don't can't think of like a motor out of a fire truck or something like that. And if we end the year and we have an extra thirty thousand, then we can say, well, we'll put it into uh. Uh, reserve at that time, and uh, that way we've got a safety net throughout the year. And uh, we can show a balanced budget now and have the best of both worlds.
Uh, I can't see anybody, but does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Sorry, um, actually, I think that's a very good suggestion, because what you're doing is. Is is uh, targeting that contingency to to areas that you have concern that if. There, that you're going to, because thi- things could come up you weren't planning on. And and uh. Um, yeah, I I I think I think Counselor Jones's idea is uh, is is good.
Well, we don't have to make a decision on this tonight, does uh. But anyway, that that sounds good. Anybody else have questions? I can't see anybody, so, just one of the times, if you do.
If Ruth Ann unshares her screen, you'll be able to see people again, if we're done looking at her screen.
Oh, wow.
Oh, there we are. Okay, good, thank you. Look, um, do we want to send uh, this back to the uh, fire committee and the public works committee to? Play with those numbers a bit, or?
No.
No?
No.
No.
I I I I agree with Paul, um, I think we should go that route, but I mean, you say we don't need to make a decision, but we need to. Move forward and give the staff direction on how to proceed from here. But I I think the audit committee's pretty well, they've done a really good job putting this together. I think we just need to tweak it a little bit to make us feel comfortable and everything, and then we can probably move forward and get our budget approved by our next council meeting, I would hope.
Well, that would be good. Counselor McNutt, you have a question?
Well, in theory, I like that idea, but I feel like sixty seven thousand's too much to just go willy nilly. So what if we did seventy five thousand in reserves or something? It'd be nice to bump that reserves up if we need it up to four hundred and fifty thousand someday. It'd be nice to do it in four and five years instead of nine, ten years.
Well, let's do it at the end of the year when we know we have the money. Right now, we have no clue. We may have a hidden expense that comes up, so if we wait eleven months. Yes, we have thirty thousand, then we can bump it up to thirty thousand. We don't have to make that decision today. If we make that decision today. Then we're not going to show a, and we have an expense, we're not going to show a balanced budget at the end of the year, we're gonna have show a deficit, and that's what we're trying not to do.
Right, so that amount though won't go in them, in there, just assuming they can spend it.
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
No.
No, it's not, it's not gonna happen this year, because there's gonna be uh, things in place that all expenses are approved by council. And that's, there's, there's recommendations coming forward for that.
Okay, Ken has a uh, comment to make.
Yeah, no, actually, I, the, what will happen is, is in theory, if you don't use any of the sixty seven. Everything goes according to plan on all the line items, your financials is gonna show an operating surplus. At the end of the year, uh, surplus at, I shouldn't say operating, surplus in your operational budget of sixty seven thousand. Which you then will be able to transfer to your operating reserve and start next year with. A higher operating reserve and start from scratch with next year's budget. So so it'll work its way out, and when you send your financials to the province, it will be showing a not. A surplus for that year, not a deficit.
Cool, Counselor Culver.
I guess I agree with what Counselor Jones said, and I had a little. I don't know what you want to call it, animosity, about giving everybody an extra thirty thousand dollars and thinking, oh gee whiz, we can go spend thirty thousand now that we didn't have the other day. So.
No, there are no spend it, it's saved.
As long as every, as long as everybody understands that when you say, well, we have an extra thirty thousand for you.
No, no. Uh, Ruth Ann, you told me today you're still waiting for some numbers to finalize this, am I correct in that?
All I'm really waiting for, well, this was a fast decision faster than the other night, so, this is good. I was, I did put that email out to the province on how to use the COVID money and uh. Was hoping to get a response, but I mean, uh, if I don't have one by two weeks, I'll keep digging, but. Oh, you know, certainly with these two contingency lines, I could, it could be together by the next council meeting.
Is that the wishes account, all counts, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, just wondering about these, this breathing stuff, um, are they trying to get it so that each guy has his own breathing um, equipment? So they're not sha- do they share, do they share the breathing apparatus now, or is there certain guys that have it that just use it and? That's it, because I could see that as being a COVID expense if we're trying to equip our firemen. So that they're not sharing masks and things like that, correct?
Counselor McDonald, go ahead, please, you're muted.
What I understood that they they were saying is some of the equipment is being obsolete, aged. And it eventually has to be replaced.
That's the way I understood it too, was that this, these breathing packs are something that they they ongoingly need. We usually um, put, set it up as a capital.
I I'm just saying though, that maybe that is a route we could take is is with the COVID money is to use it. As an individual and we're not, we won't bother, I'll tell, we're on Facebook Live and everybody's heard us now, so, there's no secrets here, so. But I mean, I'm just wondering if that's a route we could take to to try to get the COVID money to fund this stuff.
Right, you don't want to share them? Counselor Culver, go ahead.
Counselor McDonald is absolutely correct. They have breathing apparatuses, it's coming to its life end, and you gotta throw it away and buy new, so. This is gonna be an ongoing thing.
No, I I think what Counselor Deputy Mayor Edshed is asking, are these units shared between each fireman? Or is each fireman assigned one, and there is no sharing, because if they're sharing them, we can go with the COVID issue. Everybody should have their own breathing apparatus, so well, we can use our COVID money. Am I correct, Counselor Edshed, is that what you're asking? Okay, Counselor McDonald, go ahead.
I think it's a good, would be a good idea to ask if they're sharing it, and then maybe that is a possible route for the COVID money.
Yeah, there must be a fireman out there somewhere.
Well, I'm texting one right now. He's saying um, they have eleven packs for twenty nine members. I've asked, can you share, and I have the dot, dot, dot at the moment, I'll get back to you.
So, well, uh, so, somebody got a question, are you asking a question, Counselor Culver, or just waving your pen?
I get, if I may. I guess the other thing too is they're gonna, as I mentioned at the last meeting, they're gonna need some new bunker gear also, because they have bunker gear now that. As I said, if firemen wear black bunker gear, they're not allowed in a house fire.
Right.
So they're desperate for that too, so.
I believe that's in the budget, that stayed in the budget. Uh, for four people, was what Truman first mentioned to me. I don't know, was there more than four that? You fellows spoke about, or? There's eleven thousand dollars in the budget and stayed in the budget uh, for uh bunker gear for four members. Was, does that sound?
Okay, Counselor McNutt, you've got an answer for us?
He says currently they share, so maybe what Deputy Mayor Edshed is saying, we can say we no longer want to share. And we need to buy some new so that they don't have to share.
Ken, can I ask you if we're skirting, skirting, no, I'm not even gonna ask you that, we'll just go with. Yeah, we shouldn't be showing bunker gear in COVID times, anyway, um. But sort of, uh, okay, is there anything else? Probably sort of send this off to back to staff and hopefully they can have something that we can, a, a budget for our next council meeting. Is there anything else, uh, Linda or Ruth Ann?
No, not for the, uh, general operating budget.
Okay, good. So.
What about, uh, Ken? Can you think of anything I missed there? That I need answers on for this?
Not in the operational, just in the, uh, capital.
Okay, so shall we move on to the capital budget? Uh, turn the floor back over to Ruth Ann and you can do your thing there, Ruth Ann.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to share a screen again.
Okay.
Uh, just as soon as I do this budget and share. And okay, there is the capital budget. The sidewalks we're in here, and so these are the ones that we'd have to move out. This is this year's, they go by year, the tabs on the bottom, take it year by year. This you guys received on Friday or sometime last week about the overall view of the capital reserves and the overall view of the capital debt. And that gives you an idea of where things are right now in our reserves. We have, uh, two hundred and eighty two thousand. We should be now, as Ken said, they want us to be up around forty percent, which is really difficult, especially for a small town to do because you need some money to operate on. So we're, the aim is fifteen to twenty percent. If we can get our reserves up around four hundred and fifty thousand, that's where we want to be. We, um, we're be transferring the sixty two thousand out of reserves. These, and these numbers here are transfers out of reserves to pay for future projects. We did projects right up for ten years. Like these are ma- major projects, right? We did not include the town hall, but, um, other equipment and, uh, things like that are in there. So when you take those in consideration of coming out of your capital re- reserves, and this is what we want to transfer into capital reserves for this year. So this year we put fifty thousand. Next year, we want to put a hundred thousand into our reserves in the following year, in the year after that. And one of the reasons we feel we can do this is because we do have some debt that's getting retired in two thousand, well, it says two thousand twenty one, we won't feel it until two thousand and twenty two. And, uh, so we feel we could, especially if we can see what we can do this year with the budget. We'll, we'll see how this can all unfold for us, but, uh, we can continue to put a hundred thousand in to, uh, build up our reserves with our retiring debt, the way it's going. Now, taking in consideration throughout these years, there is going to be more debt incurred. And that's also in your capital budget. And that part of it's not on here is the, because you notice the current debt payments goes down to sixty two hundred dollars. Well, that's, when you take on more debt, that's going to be more than that. We don't have those numbers in there yet. That is, uh, debt affordability model that Paul Wills is building for us at, uh, the province. And when, once we pass this capital budget, I will send this to him. He will put those numbers in his model and it gives you a, an overview of what our debt will look like for the next ten years. And, uh, with the influx of capital reserves as stated and what we're taking out of reserves. I know this all looks very, um, it's a lot of numbers, but you can find the, all these numbers in each one of these sheets. And that's what Paul's debt affordability model is about, is actually taking all these numbers, putting it all in the model so that we can see where we are financially over ten years. Uh, the, and taking into account some big projects that we have to look after, like this year. Um, the, the projects are fairly minimal. And any projects we are doing, we were going to finance right out of our general operating because we couldn't take on any more debt this year. We, we had the big debt last year. So, you know, the, the heat pump, it's still a, a capital asset and it comes out of the capital budget, but we are financing it through the general operating budget this year. That's on one of the line items. You'll see it as a capital item on the, uh, right by the medical center. So the other area we're looking at was the, uh, breathing apparatus. It is a capital item. We generally had borrowed money in the past through debt to pay for this. But this year we're trying to do it through our general operating budget. As well as sidewalks, uh, the Duke and the Hanlon, that's a little higher than maybe the, what's on your guys' sheets just because when Wes was in here one day, he mentioned the, he didn't add in the concrete. So then we added in the concrete. So there's, that might be a little higher than what you fellows have on your sheets. Apologize for that if I didn't update you. Uh, paving, generally we do eighty thousand dollars every year on paving. And that's, that is allowable if it's, it, it can't be patchwork. It's supposed to be like a newly paved section. So it has actually increased our asset. And that comes from gas tax, eighty thousand, and we've spent on trails, eight thousand. That has been something we've done for years, but we're not tied into an agreement, are we, on that? No. So that's something that you can decide whether you want to continue that spread there with the, uh, gas tax. And that's how I put it under gas tax this year. Um, also this, um, AIM cohort, that was forty eight hundred dollars that we pay out this year. That was a, um, cohort that Wes and I and Rachel went to last year. And that basically gave us a model to go by to, uh, set up our, what we needed to do in capital. And so the majority of it was spent last year, and that, this is a tail end of the project. We are committed to that for this year. So it also can come out of gas tax. That was one of the stipulations of this, this, um, cohort that we went to. So that is a prior commitment. And again, the, the sixty two thousand that, um, went into reserve for the arena automation project. So that's what this year was going to look like now. The breathing apparatus is, is, we'll, we'll see what you fellows want to do with that as well as the sidewalks. Were taken out. So if they're taken out, where do you want me to put them, I guess? Because they'll have to be put in some year up the road, those were, you know, so in twenty twenty two, twenty three, we have, this is why the, I had a price of ten thousand dollars off of that, um, study that was done for the roof. So this year we're repairing it, but next year we headed in here to replace. So uh, that's, you know, a public works van, um, a ten thousand dollars there in a fire truck, a hundred thousand dollars. So these are all capital costs we got from Public Works and the fire department of, of different things that needed done that also included for, for the office was this town suite. We have, uh, once we turn over all the accounting into town suite, it will cost another ten thousand dollars to, um, get all the licensing. We have most of it now, but that's the other ten. So again, you have the paving. This was the same year that Wes was doing Waverly and Black River Road and the water. And while we were going by Waverly, he thought we paved the, um, parking lot in the rink there. So maybe we'll put, that would be an extra cost in there that year if all this happens. These are water mains that need replaced this year. Um, so that's two thousand and twenty two, twenty three. Now, keeping in mind, the water utility is a whole separate set of books. This will not affect our general operating or our operating reserve budgets, but it will certainly be taken in consideration by the Water Utility Board. So. Um, yes, Ken.
Can I just, my, oh, yeah, can I just add something? Can we go back to your, your, uh, overview of capital reserves?
Sure. I should ask you if you, it was just going on there.
Yeah. There's no magic number to the exact what your aim should have for reserves. We just used it as a target ideally, but it depends what year you're in and what major capital project you have coming up. So you can see that even three hundred thousand is not too bad right now. But when you hit, if you go down to twenty twenty three, twenty four down here, the additions to your, to your capital, additional debt to capital expenditures, you want to build up reserves to handle those major projects. So, so if you can see the reserve that we have up here starts two eighty two, two seventy, three seventy, four seventy, three twenty, because we had a ma- major capital expenditure, back to four twenty, four seventy, we're even up to five twenty. Well, that's not necessarily too high because you have a major capital expenditure coming up in twenty seven, twenty eight. So this allows council to strategically determine how much they want to put into reserves. So you can see where this year we're putting fifty capital reserve, but we know we have to start building that up, hundred, hundred, hundred. Then we can drop it to fifty, 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 fifty. Because we're building up a reserve, we're getting ready for a big project, and then, and then it comes down again. So this chart, you, you're going to play with. Um, if a major capital, federal capital, uh, provincial cap, federal capital program comes along, well, that's going to change your strategy a bit. But the, at the end of the day, you want to have a decent level in your reserve. It might not be four fifty, might be four hundred, but at least you're building it up. So you're ready to take advantage of any cap, major capital project. Because the criteria they use, they look at several factors. One is, can you afford to do with, with your reserves, number one? Number two is, are you prepared to do the capital project? And, and the type of capital project you're doing, how it rates with the federal and provincial government. Um, and then of course, politics comes into it too. And you know, how strong your political, uh, voices about this lobby is for a particular project. So all those factors come into play. And, uh, so, so that's ba- that's basically what this chart's for. And after Paul, Paul Wills, uh, completes the, uh, the debt payments, future debt payments based on the information we gave him, uh, you're going to have a good, good overview of your, of your capital plan for the next ten years. And it will, it will be adjusted. The other thing is, if you, we tried to put in the capital project in, uh, twenty, whatever the year is, um, that we want to do. Oh, I know. What year is the sewer, the, uh, the septic, uh, the pumps? Yeah, the lift stations.
Uh, let's see, that was. Okay, I thought it was, oh, that was the sewer, wasn't it? Sorry, I probably passed by. Uh, it was water main. Replace two of the four lift stations. Yeah, that was year twenty twenty four.
Twenty, twenty four, twenty five.
Yeah.
So if, if you notice, we have federal grant and provincial grant. Well, obviously, if, if those programs don't come through, then you're going to push this, this project later in your capital plan. So, so this gives you a snapshot for, for your planning of capital projects and how you're going to finance them, how much you have to put in reserve. Yeah. Sorry, uh.
No, that's, that's great. No, I, uh, was going too fast probably with the lack of estimation. Anybody else have questions on this? I can't see everybody, but can you see anyone?
Uh, Ruth Ann?
Yeah.
This, this is just a general estimate at, at a budget, is it? I assume nothing is carved in stone when we, if we adopt this.
No, it's not carved in stone. It changes from year to year, as Ken says, depending on what funds are available, depends, depending on our operational uh, abilities and, and, uh, so this is like a work in process. But it just gives an idea to Paul Wills to put it into a model for us. Yeah. And what were you going to say, Ken?
I was just going to add to that. You, you do have to send into the province a three to five year capital improvement plan. And this is basically what you're going to send in for the next, you know, this year.
Right.
Council approves the capital budget for this con- coming, the year we're in, this coming year. And, but the province is also looking at your plan. And then that will, that will, that's not ca- uh, carved in stone. You can, you can change that as you go along. Um, most units, they, they haven't announced the provincial and federal programs yet. So it's hard for, for municipal units to project when they're exactly, they're going to do a major water project or sewer, wastewater project because they don't know when the cost sharing is coming in. So they, they'll put it down, but, but obviously that's going to change depending on when that funding comes through. So, so the, the budget you're proving this year's is carved in stone, so to speak. But what you're sending the province for the next few years, that, that will change to some, some extent is each year as the council looks at their, what they require and what their ability is to, to carry out some of these projects.
Anybody else have questions?
I have a question there. Um, so are we, um, do we need a council to decide what, where this year, twenty twenty one, are we looking at trails, eight thousand dollars? Is, are we looking for a commitment for this year's capital? Yes, approval. Yes. So something to consider for council would be the, the trails, right? And then, um, under sidewalks, what we want to do with that? That was discussed as well.
You know, I had something here. Excuse me, but I mean, as long as we concentrate on our operating budget, we can still pass this capital budget, but that doesn't mean we have to spend that money in this year. So I mean, uh, we can approve it and then as year goes on, decide if that's exactly what we want to spend that money on. Isn't that correct?
Oh, what can you answer that?
Yeah, I answer, my experience with capital budgets, oftentimes, uh, municipality won't get all their capital budgets done because they've run out of time in terms of, uh, carrying out the project. Yeah, or if you're, you, you go for a tender, it comes in way over what you planned on. You, you, you just defer to another year. But you're, you're right. So then you're, you come, you know, you'd be underspent. So, but when you do, uh, and that's why the sidewalks, if you decide not to do that this year, then, then what we're looking for count from council is, uh, do you want us to push it the next year or the following year? When, 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 without being, uh, having to make a commitment on it, but the, the- But the, 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 um. Yeah, this year, this is the plan that the organization's looking between the councils, the committees and the staff are working together on. And there will be changes as time goes on.
Okay, so, okay, anybody else have a question for Ken or for Ruth Ann regarding the capital budget? Okay, so do we want to send that to our next council meeting?
I would say so.
Yeah, do we still need this screen up or can we go back to people? No.
I will stop sharing.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
See people again.
People again, yeah. Okay, so, um, can we give direction to staff to have that ready for council? Or is there any more input needed for it?
I'm good. I think it's good to go to council or staff.
Okay, well, we will direct staff to sort of get that ready and if there's any issues, we will notify council long before the next council meeting. Does that sound? Uh, next on it is the Audit Committee Report Recommendation. Who's presenting that?
Okay, hi everyone. Um, so we had an audit committee meeting, uh, just recently on the twenty-seventh. I believe it was in April. Uh, so during that, we had a very detailed meeting going over the budget and, and they went line by line. And it was very productive meeting, so they came up with a motion and the motion was, which a lot of this work has been done. Um, it was moved and seconded that the draft twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two general operating budget presented to the Oxford Town Council. Reflects closure of the Oxford Arena and leaves the Recreation Director and Community Economic Development Officer positions vacant for one year. Also, the Audit Committee presents the draft budget, budget with consideration that the Fire Department reduced their expenditures to two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And the Public Works Department reduced their expenditures in transportation to three hundred and fifty thousand. So this was a recommendation to, um, the committee at the hall.
Could I just interrupt there for a second, please? Uh, I think it was a, a community-run arena. It's not that we plan to close the arena, but a community-run arena, because there's still expenses being paid for by the town. Uh, that aren't ice time expenses and also that automation plans to be done. So certainly, we're not planning to close the arena if we're gonna spend sixty-two thousand on an automation in there. So I'd just like to make that clarification.
Thank you, Counselor Jones.
Anybody else have anything, question, comment? Well, do we need a motion on that, Linda?
Yes, uh, if we could have a motion to recommend it, um, council at the next meeting.
Uh, can we have a recommendation or a motion to recommend, Counselor Black, seconded by Counselor Jones? All those in favor, raise your hand, please, so we can see them. Those, motion carries. Thank you to the Audit Committee, a lot of hard work went into that, a lot of time was used and it is much appreciated by everybody. Uh, next on the agenda, transfer site Deputy Mayor Edshed, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I was down to the transfer station. I guess I sent pictures of everyone, um, Paul, I believe he replied back to me about one. It's pretty well a mess, um, kind of looks like a dump. We need to look at, uh, getting it cleaned up down there, I would say. Um, also, I do believe that the staff, now that the budget process is almost over. Need to start taking a look at our contract, because that seems to me that it's gonna be due this summer. For our, uh, transfer station or whatever route we're going with. And, uh, I just want to put that bug out there, but the transfer station is a mess. I went down there, the, all the hoppers were full. There's garbage everywhere through the trees, through the fields, it's just, it's disgraceful. Sorry, I had to bring that news to you, but we need to get something done, we need to get it cleaned up and get it fixed up, so it doesn't look like a dump, it's a transfer station. And, um, and we do need to, um, take a look at our contract and start preparing a new one.
Right, but how often do they get down and empty those dumpsters for the fans? Does anybody know or is it under a, a time limit or just whenever they get to it? Does anyone have an idea about that, Linda?
We have a contract with Pharaoh and they, apparently there's something that's preventing them from picking up these, uh, hoppers. Wes was trying to describe that to me today. I could send that out in the email as to why the, they're not emptied. Um, and we can follow through with that if council so chooses.
Why would be nice, yes. And when it's gonna be fixed, so like I say, the hoppers are full, there's not much place to put anything. Doesn't help the problem at all. Counselor Deputy Mayor.
The least they could do is maybe take some more hoppers down, because it looks to me like they've taken hoppers out. We don't have near as many hoppers there as we used to have. And, and I think that's a lot of the garbage problem, because these hoppers are getting full. Birds and stuff are tearing the bags and stuff open, and then everything's just starting to blow through the woods and through everything. But there, I, I, I don't, I can't even imagine how much garbage is scattered down through there.
Counselor Colbert.
If I was down there, the hoppers were running over on the ground, as Counselor Edshed said. But there was also two hoppers that weren't even open that were empty, there was nothing in them. Just so somebody needs to, uh, let the attendant know that when things are full, running over on the ground, the other hopper should be emptied. Cause the response that I, the response that I got was, well, people don't know they're empty, because I didn't open them.
Well, there, when I was there the other day, everything was full. There were no empty hoppers, not one, everything was full.
Anyway, uh, can we direct staff to contact Pharaoh and see if we can get some more hoppers there until they can fix the problems, start hauling stuff out of there?
Certainly noted.
No.
And what about cleaning up the messes down there? Like some, we gotta start doing something down there with that, that's like, if the guys could spend a half a day a week down there even. Picking up garbage after a few weeks, they'd get it all cleaned up.
I was working with Wes today on that and, uh, developing a plan on how we can clean that up some more, so, yes.
Been a long meeting, folks, is there anything else? I don't see anything else in my agenda. Someone want to move for adjournment?
Just, I would just like to make sure we have a, uh, if I may, a concrete plan on, on the dump by council meeting. A way, and maybe it'll be cleaned up by then, but, uh, this has been going on for quite a while, so I would like to see some kind of date. That, uh, we can have this rectified.
Okay, uh, so we can put down our next council meeting agenda and get a report on it? It's council meeting in two weeks.
An idea would be, maybe I could get Wes to put that in his report, uh, the development plan and, and procedure on the transfer site.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, anybody?
Just one thing I have.
Okay, go ahead.
We also should take a porta potty down there for the dump attendant. Dump attendant shouldn't have to go to the woods when they have to use the bathroom.
There always used to be one down there, can I ask what happened to it?
Sure, go ahead and ask. Anybody, well, I don't know if anybody knows, but let's look at that, go ahead, Linda.
I'll just, I'll check into that, yes, and get back to you guys.
Can we add that to the budget, guys?
Pardon me?
Add that to the budget.
Add it to the budget, okay.
I would definitely say that would be in contingency.
Someone want to move for adjournment, please?
I do.
Seconder? We're gone. Thank you, everybody, good meeting. I think we're doing pretty good. Thank you all, have a good night.